Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our June second council meeting. Our first order of business is a call to order and rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the God who stands upon nation, our God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the sunshine statement and roll call by Mrs. Lauren Stats, our municipal clerk.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of June second, twenty twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier. On January ninth, twenty twenty five, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website. On May thirty first, twenty twenty five, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on May thirty first, twenty twenty five. And has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento.
Present.
Council President Sigmund.
Here.
Mrs. Albertson.
Here.
Mrs. Lance.
Here.
Mrs. Rios.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark noted absent.
Item number three on our agenda is proclamations. We have a proclamation this evening celebrating June is Pride Month and Councilwoman Terry Albertson from the Denellen Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission has kindly offered to read the proclamation.
Okay, proclamation celebrating Pride Month. Whereas the borough of Denellen, New Jersey is a community that values diversity and inclusion. And is committed to ensuring equal rights and opportunities for all its residents and whereas during Pride Month, we celebrate the victories that have affirmed the freedom, fairness and equality to love whom one chooses and to live as one's true self and whereas we affirm our support for all residents and stand with them as we strive to foster a culture of hope, love, understanding, authenticity and mutual respect among family, friends, members, uh, family members, friends and neighbors. Now therefore, Mayor Jason F. Solento, along with the Denellen council Borough Council does hereby proclaim June twenty twenty five as Pride Month in the Borough of Denellen and encourage all residents to join in celebrating and supporting our diverse and vibrant community. Jason F. Solento, Mayor, June second, twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you, council member. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of our regular meeting minutes from May nineteenth, two thousand twenty five. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Any comments, additions, redactions to the meetings that minutes as they currently stand? Without hearing any roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Item number five on the agenda is the introduction of ordinances this evening at twenty twenty five dash twelve. It's a reintroduction of an ordinance to add new chapter thirty nine municipal flag lowering policy to part one administrative legislation to Borough Code. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Okay, as this is introduction, we'll just take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Okay, item number six on the agenda is the adoption in public hearing of ordinances. We have two this evening, twenty twenty five dash thirteen and twenty twenty five dash fourteen. Can I have a motion and second on twenty twenty five dash thirteen and ordinance determining the salaries for the Borough of Denellen?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
At this time, we'll open the floor to the public. We ask that you please state your name and address and speak to us solely on twenty twenty five dash thirteen. Without hearing, hearing any, we will close that portion of the meeting and we'll open up the floor to the mayor and council for discussion solely on twenty twenty five dash thirteen.
I have a question. Um, as I was looking at one of the other resolutions, I, I noticed that, um, there is a line item for Chief of Police and Captain, but where do the other police officers like Sergeant and Patrolman fall under um, the salaries for the borough? Is that somewhere?
They fall in separately underneath their tiers in their contract.
Okay, and then where can that information be found? Is that?
Ask for the contract through Alex Miller or Business Administration.
So what kind of pay skill are they typically on? Is that, is that totally under, um, Police Department?
Well, contractual pay sale.
Okay.
I mean, I can provide to you.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the members of the council? As always, remember when you open up a contract, you open up everything. Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, without hearing any roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion and second on twenty twenty five dash fourteen ordinance approving a five year tax exemption for a new multiple dwelling rental project constructed by three thirty seven Front Street Associates LLC. At three thirty seven Front Street pursuant to the five year exemption and abatement law in chapter one fifteen B of the Denellen Municipal Code.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Before we open the floor to the public, I've asked Sandy Galatio, our redevelopment legal counsel, who has been on this project uh, to do a short discussion on this specific item.
Very sure. Uh, Sandy Galatio, Wooddells, Marx Lane and Mittendorf, we serve as redevelopment council for the borough. Uh, this project, uh, three thirty seven Front Street is a eight unit, uh, dwelling. Uh, it's going to be one affordable, uh, unit in the, uh, in the dwelling. And they applied to the borough for a five year tax exemption, uh, to assist them with the feasibility of constructing the project. Um, the exemption is pursuant to the five year, uh, exemption and abatement law. Uh, it's a state statute in New Jersey. Uh, Denellen, a few years ago, uh, adopted, uh, an ordinance, enabling that legislation, uh, to be available to developers in Denellen. Uh, so that is one of the prerequisites for allowing for, uh, this, uh, exemption abatement. The borough reviewed the application submitted by the applicant, found that everything was proper. Uh, and we drafted this, uh, exemption. It's for five years. The exemption starts, um, uh, when the building is completed, uh, they do an extra, uh, submission to the tax assessor. So that it will go on the records, uh, that's be done within, um, thirty days of the actual completion of the project. Uh, and during the five years, the taxes are phased back in so that it's close to, um, being what its full taxation is at the end of the exemption period. Uh, in conjunction, uh, with this, the developers also agreed to uh, a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, community benefit contribution. The borough to be used for pedestrian safety and streetscape improvements in connection with that project. Uh, that's also on your agenda tonight, uh, in the resolution section. So if you have any questions on that, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Uh, that's time we'll open up the floor to the public to ask any questions pertaining to twenty twenty five dash fourteen. Make your comments known to, uh, we just asked that you please state your name and address. Anybody online? Okay, without hearing any from the public, we'll open the floor to mayor and council for discussion solely on twenty twenty five dash fourteen. Okay, uh, with that, roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes, Mr. Galatio, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll note that that's the, this is the first exemption under this law and this chapter that the boroughs, uh, uh, done, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven on the agenda is resolutions. We have resolutions two twenty six through two thirty six. Two twenty six through two thirty six, yup, okay, uh, and Mrs. Lauren Stats, we'll read them through.
Resolution two twenty six is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty seven is approving the first amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and between the Borough of Denellen and three thirty seven Front Street Associates.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two twenty eight is to approve a twenty twenty six fiscal year municipal alliance agreement with Middlesex County.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Abstain.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two twenty nine is to approve calendar year salaries for twenty twenty five.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty is authorizing the municipal tax collector to prepare and issue estimated tax bills for the Borough of Denellen for the third installment of twenty twenty five taxes.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty one is to approve the Church of Saint John's for a basket raffle license on November fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty two is to award a contract to Key Tech for the extraction and core analysis for the Second Street Improvements Project.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty three is to hire summer camp staff for the Denellen Recreation Department.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty four is to award a contract for professional services to CMA associates to perform engineering services for Second Street Improvements Project Phase Two at a cost not expected to exceed ninety three thousand dollars.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty five is to award a contract for professional services to CME associates to perform engineering services for Bambrook Road Streetscape Improvements Projects at a cost not expected to exceed fifty nine thousand four hundred.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Rios, Sigmund. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Resolution two thirty six is to award a contract to Garden State Paving Solutions for the installation and reconstruction of ADA ramps on Jackson Avenue for amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty two thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and seventy two cents.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight on the agenda is council reports. Councilwoman Albertson?
The Fire Department responded to thirty three calls for service in May. Total calls for twenty twenty five, one hundred and fifty eight to date. Hazmat was six, false alarm was fifteen, service call five, EMS one. Good intent for fire two, the monthly total of thirty three. In addition to emergency responses, the Fire Department attended, attended several events and held several drills during May. On the eighth, the probationary may, uh, members began in-house training prior to attending the Fire Academy. On the twelfth, they held a monthly officers meeting and work drill. On the seventeenth, probationary members received initial CPR training. On the twenty first, they had monthly instruction training. On the twenty fifth, they had a drill to prepare apparatus for the Memorial Day Parade. On the twenty sixth, they attended the Memorial Day Parade. On the twenty eighth, they held their monthly fire company meeting. On the thirtieth, they had a special drill to prepare boat and high water truck for possible rain. They're happy to see a number of residents continue to join the department over the past few months. The new members will be attending fire school in the upcoming months. Fire Department is looking for new members to join their department. Membership is open to anyone sixteen to eighteen as a junior member and full member is open to anyone over eighteen. Visit their website at W W W dot Denellen F D dot com or email join F D at Denellen F D dot com for more information. Reminder, the Fire Company is sponsoring the street fair Saturday, June twenty first from eleven AM to five PM on North Avenue. We hope to see everyone there. Downtown Denellen Management Organization decorated the gazebo's with flower baskets and they look lovely. There's a car show on North Avenue this Sunday, June eighth, that supports DDMO. Be sure to stop by and check out the cars. They will be there from ten AM to three PM. The Friends of Denellen Public Library, the Open Air Market is in full swing. Stop by on the first and third Sundays from eleven AM to three PM. Visit our vendors and enjoy some food and play a game of golf. Uh, this, the third Sunday is, uh, Father's Day and all fathers play golf for free. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Rios?
Buildings and grounds report. Fire extinguishers, fire extinguisher inspection have been completed for all borough properties. Garden State Paving completed the removal and replacement of the ADA ramp at the Denellen Public Library this past week. The Department of Public Works cleaned borough streets and prepared Washington Park Memorial, Washington Memorial Park in advance for the Memorial Parade, Day Parade. Parsa, um, Parsa oversaw three sewer lateral repairs on South Avenue conducted by the contractor working on the NJ American Water Main Replacement Project. Parsa continues to monitor progress on the Water Main Installation. Green Brook Flood Commission will have their next meeting on Wednesday, June fourth at seven thirty PM. Log into their website for the Zoom meeting link. Denellen Public Library update. This month at the library, arts after school continues every week at three thirty PM. Wednesday, June fourth at six PM, attend an information session for first time home buyers. Tuesday, June eleventh, representatives from the College of New Jersey will represent a bilingual program for small business owners or those looking to start a business. Learn about available grants and resources to support your goals. Friday, June thirteenth, celebrate the start of summer after school with popsicles and in-person registration for the summer reading program. Also invite everyone to complete our summer survey available online through Facebook and Instagram or in person at the library. Be sure to visit our Facebook page and website to stay current on the upcoming programs and announcements. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Lance?
The Recreation Department, on Monday, May twenty sixth, we celebrated our annual Memorial Day Parade. The Recreation Department extends its heartfelt thanks to everyone who attended and participated in this wonderful event. Special appreciation goes to the Memorial Day Committee who began planning this day back in February. We'd also like to recognize Bill Euler, Daryl Story and Commander Pete Albertson from the American Legion. Commander Gary Stube, Jeff Gerber and Bill Sutton from the BFW. Officer Joe Dudley, Mayor Solento, Recreation Program Coordinator Kelly Cedar, Tyler Mayer, Billy George, Business Administrator Alex Miller and the Recreation Commission. As summer approaches, Denellen is excited to offer residents a variety of camps of youth this year. Here are the available programs. Have the Destroyers Basketball Camp open to boys and girls entering fourth and through eighth grade. Um, Destroyer Soccer Camp for middle school boys, a new addition this year. This camp is specifically tailored for middle school boys interested in soccer and will be coached by Fanner, the high school soccer coach. A traditional day camp, um, is also being offered through the Denellen Recreation. Um, that offers a range of activities including arts and crafts, sports, games and field trips. Designed for children ages five to twelve, it provides a fun and safe environment for summer recreation. And, um, the Denellen Arts Inclusion Culture Committee, um, Art Camp is also open to kids ages six through twelve with a session available for teens. For more information about all camps, please visit W W W dot Denellen Parks and Recreation dot com. All camp registrations must be completed through the Denellen Parks and Recreation website. And mark your calendar. Recreation Night at the Ballpark is scheduled for Thursday, June twenty sixth at Somerset Patriots Ballpark. All spring recreation athletes are invited to join and will receive a free ticket. Please note that all children must be accompanied by an adult. Additional tickets are available for ten dollars each. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Council President.
Uh, yes, I also just want to add an, uh, an additional plug to the Recreation Summer Camp. Uh, my boys have been going there and absolutely love it and it definitely rivals some of the larger camps. You pay a lot more money. I know my boys have a lot more fun there and they get to be with some of the, uh, other kids from Denellen. Uh, so just plug in that, uh, and that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Scott.
But DPW report, they can routinely clean the downtown area and all the borough parks and properties, weekly lawn and landscape maintenance at parks and properties. Maintain the ball field, walk the streams after the recent heavy storms. Assisted with road closures, there were the Memorial Day Parade. New plants and mulch added around the downtown trees. New plants were added to the flower beds in McCoy Park. Completed the last pass for leaf bags around town. Painted new handicap spot for residents as approved by the council. And cleaned out the trash trap. For the mechanic division, they serviced the police fleet as they come due for maintenance and breakdowns. They also serviced DBW fleet for maintenance and breakdowns. And they serviced all the lawn equipment for continued operation throughout the season. Uh, Public Works will have its additional household rubbish drop off June eleventh from twelve thirty to six and June fourteenth from eight to one. This drop off is for residents would pay to drop their household rubbish off twenty five dollars for a car load, fifty dollars for an SUV or a minivan and seventy five dollars for a pickup or van. ID is required to prove residential status and all drop off must be prepaid at the clerk's office prior to the event. And it is not open to contractors. And as always, the free regularly scheduled annual roll off are Saturdays in September and October. That's my report.
Okay. Um, I may have missed this, but do we talk about the car show on June eighth? That was brought up?
Yeah, I mentioned it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't want to skip over the mural. Did we mention the mural too? Okay, so. Okido. So, uh, Saturday, June twenty first, Madison Avenue mural unveiling and Fire Department Street Fair, which was just mentioned by the Fire Chief. Uh, no, Councilman, Councilwoman Albertson, I apologize. Um, so, but at eleven AM on June twenty first, uh, the bright day every day, uh, mural by Olga Tapia will be, uh, the grand opening of it will be revealed and, uh, you can join us there as well as at the, the annual Fire Department Street Fair same day. Uh, killing multiple birds with one stone, so a lot to do on that weekend. Uh, American Water Projects, uh, over the last few years, New Jersey American Water has invested over ten million in the upgrading the known water main infrastructure and will invest approximately eight million dollars more in two thousand twenty five. Uh, New Jersey American Water is almost done replacing the six inch cast iron water main installed in the nineteen forties with a twelve inch uh, ductile water main and forty seven water services to each residential home. The new water main will increase residential water flow and add pressure to the new fire hydrants that will be replaced in the old ones later in the project. Following the water service installation, American Water will pave the streets approximately ninety days after the installation phase. So, uh, what's going on is they're replacing lead based, uh, pipes as well as the clay like ones, and so it's a definitely an infrastructure improvement. Um, we've been informed that there's some upcoming New Jersey American Water projects that they want to do on Walnut Street in Lehigh. So, uh, the Walnut Street Project will start on West Fourth Street on the road and work towards High Street area, New Jersey American Water. They're not going to go to Pulaski.
There you go, yeah, there you go.
Okay, High Street area, New Jersey American Water will replace an eight inch cast iron water main with a twelve inch ductile iron water main with a hundred and three residential water services and six new fire hydrants. Test pits along Walnut Street will start this week with limited traffic, uh, closures, which we need to talk about that. Most traffic will be able to pass by the test pit areas. Uh, the water main installation will start approximately ten days. This phase will begin on the west fourth side of Walnut and, uh, towards South Madison Avenue, which they will most likely be doing when school is already out for the summer. Uh, the Lehigh Project, uh, with American Water will start after school is out for the summer break and will place six inch main with eight inch main along with fifteen residential services and one fire hydrant. We've been having PSCNG and the sewer utility come out too.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just so the public is aware. Um, so I just want to say thank you to council members on this side of the room who made us aware of American Water closing off South Madison Avenue when they should not have done that. So, uh, for the public who's been dealing with that stress, we apologize for the inconvenience, but Mr. Miller will be speaking with American Water on how they make it a little bit more easier on your morning commute and on your return home. No lead pipes? Okay, so that should be corrected. Okay.
When I really do with the, um, test pits, we've been doing it to check and make sure that residents have the proper, uh, uh, service store to put their house, they, they were replacing with all the domains or a whole cast on.
Okay.
Upgrading from six to twelve inch for certain needs.
Got it, thank you. Um, and you will be talking to them about the South Madison closure?
Right, yes.
Okay. Uh, Second Street Phase One DOT Project and Mill and Pave, uh, Project from Denellen Middlesex Border to Madison Ave. The Second Street DOT Project's concrete work and for the curb gutter and sidewalks is approximately fifty percent complete. Depending on the weather over the next few weeks, the contractor may complete the concrete work by the week of June sixteenth. Uh, the remaining items include tree removal, installation, new roadway and pedestrian signage, milling and paving and final restoration. Um, keep in mind for the weekend of the townwide garage sale, work will be paused. Um, I know some residents shared that concern, but, uh, people will be able to access the garage sales along that timeframe. Our engineers report, uh, the LED decorative light upgrades, the borough has requested that LED lights be replaced in older decorative light poles. Um, CME is waiting for a start date from PSCNG. They've agreed to do all of them with the exception of two block, uh, two blocks between Washington and Denellen Avenue. Uh, we became aware of that. Uh, we became aware of that just over the last couple of days. Um, so we are working through PSCNG with our good Senator John Bramnick. To put a little pressure on, making sure they do all of them because it would look a little awkward in the downtown to have all LED lights with the exception of two blocks being the soft lights. So, um, hopefully we can come up to an agreement with that. Um, but, and if it does get completed the way we're hoping it gets completed, many thanks to Senator John Bramnick, our state legislature and senator. Okay, that's it for me. And next up on the agenda is. Council discussion.
Mayor, I do have a question regarding the new fire hydrants. Is it okay?
Yeah.
To address that? Um, are these six new fire hydrants or replacement fire hydrant? Okay, and so maintenance on those fire hydrants? They're replacing, they're not installing new ones, like installing brand new ones, new location?
No, no, they're, they're replacing the old one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, no council discussion this evening, department head reports, legal.
Uh, no report.
Okay, clerk registrar.
Yes. Just a reminder that Lincoln Middle School is no longer a polling location. The new polling locations are as follows, District one. Give me one second, sorry. One and two at the senior center, districts three and six at the firehouse and districts four and five at the public library. Early voting will begin on June third and end on June eighth. The closest early voting polling location is at John F. Kennedy Library at five hundred Hose Lane in Piscataway. Hours will be Tuesday to Saturday, ten AM to eight PM and Sunday, ten AM to six PM. No appointment is necessary. Sample ballots were mailed out on May twenty eighth, so you should be receiving them in the mail. Uh, I also put the link to them on the website and we have copies in the clerk's office and that is it for me.
Okay, thank you. Administration. IT. Okay. Police. Chaplain, anything from the fire company? No? Function, great, great. Love to hear that. Okay, no more department heads. Uh, item number eleven is public comments. We open the floor to the public. Please state your name and address. Anybody in chambers? Anybody online? Anyone on Facebook? Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Um, item number eleven is adjournment. We have resolution two thirty seven. Uh, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
Before we do a roll call, please join us at our next council meeting, June sixteenth at seven PM. That will be our last meeting. Uh, where we do two sessions for the summer sessions, then we'll just go to the first Monday of each month for July and August. And then we'll be back at it two times a month in September. Okay, so roll call. Actually, all in favor for an adjournment?